Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item of the evening is Englewood McCullin Reservoir Foundation Brokerage Listing Agreement. Utilities Director Tom Brennan, representatives from NavPoint, welcome, are present to discuss the EMIRF Brokerage Listing Agreement. Thanks for being here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
If you wouldn't mind using that mic, I appreciate it. We're recording.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. After the October 21st meeting, I thought it'd be good to have NavPoint come in to discuss their fees and their marketing strategy. So with NavPoint, we have Matt Kahl, Ian Elfner, and Taylor, Heather Taylor.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. I know council had a lot of discussions around the contract that was proposed. I appreciate you coming down and having a conversation. We can proceed from here.
Matt, thanks for having us. We appreciate it. I'll, my name's Matt Kahl, Ian, Heather, and I'll let Ian and Heather start it off here.
Sure. So, you know, we had, we had an opportunity to listen through the dialogue and conversation that you had last week and, you know, obviously wanted to come in and address all the concerns, issues, et cetera. I think, you know, first and foremost, we want everybody in this room to understand that, you know, if, if we end up partnering, you know, with Englewood McCullin Reservoir Foundation, that we are going to take the opportunity to market the property specifically and really push it out to the brokerage community, developers, end users, and the like. You know, just to be very candid and clear, we're not going to, you know, take advantage of low-lying fruit. I don't think that's our intent. I don't think that's where you're going to get the best return and the best bang for the buck, I'd like to say, for Englewood. So, which is important. You know, I think that taking it to the market, you're going to capture a lot of different groups out there that likely haven't been made aware of this property throughout the years. Historically speaking, you know, as a broker myself, I'm sure Matt and Heather have had the same, you know, dealings in the past, is, you know, what's going on with that land? What's happening with that land? Where can you get information for that land? And, you know, contrary to just, you know, picking up the phone and calling the number and the sign, you know, that's, that's the way to get the information. And a lot of business nowadays in the electronic world is done, you know, with marketing information online and through other mediums that we utilize as a commercial firm. So, I think that's important for you guys to hear, and, you know, and we wanted to touch on that item first and kind of walk through that with you, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
And I don't know if I can add to that, too. So, our goal would be-
Put a mic up in front of your face so people can hear on the-
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our goal would be to take it to market and find the highest and best use for each, each site. And then, once we find the highest and best use for each site, and there's kind of been a little bit of energy already going with the existing people, but our goal would be to then find synergistic uses and really try and drive that price as high as we possibly can. So that would be the goal of taking it to market, finding those highest and best users that would be perfect for the site, and then also drive other people into, might you say, like a bidding war for the sites to try and get it as high as possibly that we can. Just to kind of tip on what Ian was saying.
So, I, I think to that point, if, if you guys engage us as your representative, as your fiduciary, to, to market the property, you know, I think what we would convey tonight is that's the first thing we're going to do. I mean, for us to just step in and, you know, take the, the LOIs that you guys have in your hands, A, there would, there'd still be a tremendous amount of work that, that it would take to get those things all the way to the finish line. But, given that the property has not been marketed, what we would encourage you guys to do is to, to market the property for a period of time. Because to Ian and to Heather's point, the, the market doesn't necessarily know what's available at this interchange. They don't understand the uses. They don't, you know, they don't, they don't have a, maybe a full understanding that these sites are really even available. And so, taking some time to really gotten actively market the property, and that, you know, that's not sticking a sign on the property and waiting for the phone to ring, it's proactively contacting users and retailers that, that, that might, you know, that might like to be at this interchange, and, and trying to maximize value here. So, our objective would be to, to do that, to go out and really maximize price, you know, and, and then see, and it might end up being, at the end of the day, it might end up being one of the users that you guys have talked to, to this point, but I think until we really have a full-fledged marketing effort, we're not going to know that. But my, my sense would be knowing this part of the metro area and, and knowing the project that, that I think would generate a lot of other interest out of the gate here as we get into it.
So, one, one, one other thing to add to that is that, you know, we have other listings in and around the 470 corridor, none that are directly competing with this property, but we do have properties in Parker, at Parker Road and 470, on both sides of the interstate there with two different ownership groups. We also have a listing up at 470 and, well, I, I call it 470 and I-70, but it's, it's effectively Colfax and I-70, new development there, along with many others in and throughout the front range, that we can utilize, you know, the, the inquiries and we can utilize the marketing efforts that we're already instilling with these, these ownership groups in order to bring value to you as well. You know, we're very familiar with who's looking in and around Parker, who's looking in Castle Rock, who's looking in all these other trade areas, and I think that's only going to add, add value to you guys as well.
And to kind of touch on that a little bit more, just so you know some of our background, we obviously represent a lot of just traditional sellers, but we've worked with the City of Pueblo, that project just concluded, and we also currently work for the Colorado Land Board. So we understand kind of more these complex entities and how they work and how sometimes there's a little bit more time or, or a lot of input from a lot of different groups that go into making an overall decision. And so, knowing those ins and outs helps make the deal not falter, but actually get it to the end and make expectations on both sides a little more reasonable, too.
So, I, in talking a little bit about the, the commission structure that we brought forth, you know, I think in, in speaking with Matt and Heather, both principals of our company, you know, and, and talking through how we arrived at that, I think our goal at first was to develop a longstanding relationship with the City of Englewood as well as Englewood McCullin Reservoir Foundation, and, you know, not necessarily be a one-hit wonder. That's not our interest. So, we came forth with an aggressive commission structure from the beginning, which, you know, I, I hate to say it, and, you know, Matt would probably get upset with me, but I, I negotiated against myself, you know, in putting together the listing contract in order to bring in and come up with an aggressive proposal that would get your attention. And I think, you know, I hope we did that. I know that there's concern about the fact that, you know, we're, we're only willing to discount at a certain percentage, you know, for the existing letters of intent that are out there, but please, please, please keep in mind that those commissions are already reduced and are already below what a typical market rate would represent. In addition, the commission structure only allows for payment on the first 10 years of the term, whereas, you know, a lot of the structures for, I believe, competing companies would likely be all the way out through 20. So, I want you to know that, you know, we are aggressively working to, working with you guys to come up with a solution that makes sense for everybody. And at the same point in time, you know, I, I think, understanding that that's how our livelihood, or where our livelihood comes from, so hopefully that helps.
And I'll just say this, too, especially when you're dealing with complex land deals that require, you know, entitlements, that require horizontal infrastructure to be installed, that require vertical construction, I mean, depending on the deal and which part of the site we're talking about, you know, we are going to have, there's going to be a lot of work, a lot of time, and a lot of effort that's expelled past the LOI stage. You know, once we get into contract and we negotiate the contract, and then we start dealing with, you know, going, working through any approvals that have to occur, you know, managing timeframes, I mean, we've got, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of time and effort that's spent shepherding that deal all the way to the, the finish line. So, you know, really, the, the heavy lifting comes, once we get through the marketing phase and we get into a transaction, to ensure that that transaction gets to the, you know, really gets to the closing table and we get a deal done.
Yeah, I, I agree with that entirely as far as, you know, I, from, in our business, in our world, getting a letter of intent is oftentimes one of the easier items or one of the easier things, because they, they do fly around and people throw them out there because they're non-binding documents. But until you have a binding document that, you know, is upheld by the Colorado, or the laws of the state of Colorado, I think, you know, you're, you really don't have much. And working through the process to get to that document is the hard part. With that said, I'm, I'm not sure if there's anything else that we can touch on for you specifically, but I, I encourage you to ask any questions while we have the team here, and by all means, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Open it up for questions or comments from council. Mayor Proton Gillett.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and presenting and answering some of our questions. The truth about the LOIs is we could have done them ourselves. We could have exempted those from the contract, but we chose to allow that to be part of this contract. And I personally have an issue with, as, as a realtor myself, I know some of the, you say the hardest part is going after, sometimes the hardest part is even getting anybody interested in, all the upfront marketing and all the stuff. On the letters of intent, I think that we need, you guys need to reconsider that 85% because I'm, I'm not comfortable with that at all. We've gone through the process without any realtors for all our other properties and got them leased. So it's not that we can't do it, we prefer to have it to a professional. So, I, I'm one that, although I appreciate your commission structure on everything else, and I'm, and I'm okay with that, I, I, I still have a struggle with the LOI because these are people that our, our, our city's already been dealing with, and we've already spent time on, and we've already had marketing done and, and income done on that. So, I know that I'm still a little bit uncomfortable with that, but I'm going to see how the other council people feel. So I, I hope that you relook at that, because again, we've, we've closed all those other properties without a professional firm such as yours. I'm not saying that's what we want to do, or we'd like to, we'd obviously like to have a, a relationship. Are you open to relooking at that 85%?
I think we probably just have to kind of debrief collectively when we get out of the meeting, to be totally honest with you. I mean, I, I think, I, I, to, to be honest, I don't think, I think given that we discounted our fees on the front end here, and, and to dis, and we discounted them again, obviously, for the existing LOIs, and so then to kind of discount them again, I, I, I don't know, we'll just have to, I'm, I'm not saying we're not, we wouldn't have a conversation about it, but I think that's something we're collectively going to have to talk about when we get done tonight, so.
You know, the other thing to keep in mind as well is, you know, and not saying that you guys didn't do great deals the first time around, but you didn't have somebody in your corner, and you didn't have somebody fighting for you. You know, who's to say that you might not have been able to drive the rate more? You know, throwing that out there is just food for thought, but.
I, I think the other thing, back to kind of the previous, previous comment, was, you know, that, that when you have competition in the market and you're, you're publicly marketing and aggressively and proactively marketing a property like this, you're inevitably going to get users that weren't aware of it. And so, you know, some of the LOIs that you guys have right now might be usurped by a deal that's better, by a use that's better. And so, until we take it out to market, not that we don't have to, we obviously have to account for in some way in our agreement, in our relationship formally, how we deal with any of the existing LOIs, which, you know, again, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get done with this meeting certainly, and, and follow up on any other items, too.
You know, I just wanted to jump in and comment, you know, again, appreciate you guys coming down. I, you know, I recognize that I think we need some professional help with managing our properties and, and getting the highest and best use and highest prices we can with that, so we really appreciate that. And, and I, I recognize that your offer was, was generous and, and the fees structure was, was the best that we got offered, and that's why, you know, we wanted to proceed with you. You know, that being said, I guess my question for you is have you evaluated the LOIs we've seen so far?
Yes, we did. We looked at that, and we also looked at the existing leases, and the existing leases, you know, showed a clear kind of path as to like, set a number. We do think that we could surpass that number going forward on the activity that we feel we could generate, and we do feel that the letters of intent at the rates that they're kind of proposed are, are really weak.
What if we simply suggested that we wouldn't do these deals under the exact same LOI, you know, and exact same terms? Like, what if we just said that, you know, if we ended up, you know, doing a deal with the person who said the LOI under the terms they gave us, that we would get a reduced rate? What do you guys think about that? You know, because again, I hear what you're saying, and I hope that, you know, that's the case, that we can drive them up in price, bring some other folks, create some demand, and get a little bit of a higher price. But if that's not the case, then, you know, I guess that's where I think some of our concern comes in. If we see the thing come back and it's like, oh, it's exactly what the LOI got offered to us six months ago, you know, then all of a sudden, we feel a little shortchanged. Can you understand that, or?
Yeah, and I mean, the, if you looked at the letters of intent, a lot of them are asking for land that you can't even-
We haven't been provided the LOIs, and that was a little bit, I think, of the concern, and, and, you know, I don't, you know, and I think that's why I'm starting with that question, because, you know, I think that's the question mark in council's mind. What have we been offered? Was that a reasonable offer? And just hearing what you've told us so far, I think, is comforting to, to this group, you know?
Yeah, and even some of the land that was requested in the letters of intent isn't even land that you can lease, from our understanding. So, I think that's what we were talking about, kind of clearing, when you go to market, you have usually a full package with a very clear description of what's available and where, and easements, like a couple of the properties have some significant easements across it, and, you know, that would hinder some development, stuff like that. So with a full package, then, you can really push the users and make this synergistic play and, and take those LOIs and make them so much better. Well, I know you want this land, but it's not even available. This land might work, but we have these other users that we think might be better, or if you do it this way, so yeah.
No, I get it. I could see how you guys could add value to this transaction.
And I, I, I understand your question, and I think we can, that's something we can talk about as well, right? I mean, obviously, what we're telling you and part of our pitch to you is that we're going to be able to improve some of the terms that might be in these existing LOIs. And so, if that materializes, obviously, we would like a pat on the back and, you know, we'd like the compensation to reflect that. We'll have a conversation that kind of dovetails into, into the other question about the, the reduced fees.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember, Councilmember Berantine.
I think some of, obviously, you listened to the meeting, there were some concerns that you brought up that were brought up with this. Was less, I think, about, at least for me, was less about your contract and what was going on than the expectation. When I listened to the meeting for EMIRF and the decision-making process on how you guys were picked, there was a huge push on marketing this would take too long, and then put the people who had already put LOIs out there, delay them, and that it would take three or four months to do that, and that you guys would then go ahead and discount yours because you wouldn't be doing the marketing for all of this, as if we were just pushing it through so that the people who had already come forward would, would go through. And that was the concern, so it was a little less about, maybe there was some miscommunication or at, at least a different idea about what we expect. I agree with you. I don't think that we have done well. The hospital going in to that property for Shea, the, people think it's humorous because we could have got double that, and they're, they're developing that property. No, this property is worth a lot. There's a hospital going in there, synergy around Fitzsimmons and what happened with university and children's hospital going in in the area that, that ended up developing, this is a whole new issue. And I'm not interested in just making sure that we keep deals with people that maybe have, kind of knew about it and did all that, that we really market it and get our money's worth for it. The other issue, if you listened, I apologize, the other issue would be that we talked at council last time about whether we really were going to try and do a 20-year with the option to sell these properties, that the public believed that what they were voting on was 40 acres of land, utility property, and that it was kind of a one-time deal. And so, we would want to have some clarity before we go having you guys make deals, that this council agrees on whether we're actually going to sell these last five parcels of land or not. I agree, the other issue that came up was about bundling the properties, and when I listened to the meeting on how it got picked, how the organization, the broker got picked, it was against bundling those and using them as individual properties, more being driven by the fact that they already had these LOIs, rather than maybe looking at a different marketing strategy for the whole property, so that properties that had less value would be more marketable, especially with what's going on in that area. I do believe that we did not do as well for ourselves in the past, and a broker would probably help us. But I think we need to make some decisions on, on a few things before we go forward that might have been a little bit different than the board for EMIRF had thought.
And I think it's great that we kind of get to talk, because I think some of those items were confused. There's a lot, a lot of kind of questions there, so I'm starting with the end, sorry. On the bundling, we were just saying, in general, just like if you buy at Sam's, if you bundle, you get a better price. If you divide the lots, we can drive the price a lot higher, so that was our take on keeping them separate. A big developer would come in and want a discount. I'm taking all this land from you, I'm taking this problem from you that's been vacant, in, in the public's eyes, has been vacant forever. So that's kind of the perception right now, all this, all this land, someone needs to take care of, and, and that's not the case at all. It's very valuable land. And so we were saying dividing it will get you an even higher price, whether it be a lease or a purchase. You know, everybody probably would like to purchase if that's the decision that you guys come to. I know lots of groups would rather purchase than lease, but with the lease, you can, you know, prolong your income that comes into the, you know, to the city and stuff like that. So, we are on board with either route. We do think it would be successful either route, but the division was just merely to increase, whether it's a lease rate or a sales price, was the reason for the division. Nothing to do with the LOIs. If you look at one of the LOIs, they want all of it. So, that would be a bundle, and that's one of the ones that was the weakest, because they were looking for a huge discount on all the land that they're taking. And that's usually kind of what happens. To kind of go off Ian's point about the other properties that we work on, we know, because of these other properties, we know those big groups that need highway visibility or that easy access, and so we would be hitting those groups and showing them this new opportunity. And so we would be going out to them. I don't think that our marketing time would take that long at all. We have those groups in our back pocket. We know of several groups that are out there right now looking in this area that would be very interested in a lease or a purchase option here, not even knowing that they're available at this time.
I guess what I was trying to say is that a lot of it had to do with more information that we needed. If you listened to the meeting, what we made very clear was that we neither saw the other proposals, and we didn't see, we're going off what you're saying, what those LOIs are, because we haven't seen that, so just maybe that we needed some more information. So I'm, I'm actually kind of a little confused that you guys are sitting at the table, because a lot of the questions probably should be answered before we had this with, with you guys, but I appreciate it.
Sure, yeah. And we appreciate your time, too. It, it helps us, you know, even talking through it all, too, so everyone kind of knows it's hard to look at a, maybe a BPO or some information and kind of interpret it in different ways, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell.
If council chose to put it out there for 20-year renewable term leases, there are people that would build on the properties, correct? And so, that is really the direction I would like to see it take.
Well, I think you, you also need to be aware, I mean, at, at the end of the day, if you have a certain vision for the types of uses that you'd like to see there, there's a limited pool of people that can get their financing approved in a ground lease scenario. So, just something to keep in mind.
Okay, and just one other follow-up on that. I mean, my, my feeling and council has to come to this decision is that these are the last five properties that we have. Our forefathers bought those properties to provide income for the city for future generations, and I want to make sure that we do this wisely, so that we have income in perpetuity, instead of just a sell, and then the money's gone in just a couple of years. So, that is the way that I'm leaning. It may take longer to do that, I'm not certain, but.
Well, and our understanding was that these would, these would have to be 20-year leases with an option to purchase at the end of that initial 20-year term. So, I, I will, I will candidly say that if you, if you remove the option to purchase at the end of the 20-year term, if, if that's the direction council decides to go, that, that does limit the buyer pool. I mean, just honestly, it does limit the buyer pool. I mean, not, having no option to purchase and knowing that it's just a ground lease, just a leasehold interest in perpetuity, that changes the game a little bit. It does, so.
Thank you. You know, just a comment on that issue, you know, the way I would describe it is that I have a strong preference for a long-term lease, and that, you know, a, a long-term lease with an option to buy would have to come at some premium in my mind, you know, because again, I think, because of our preference for long-term income. So, in my mind, I, I wouldn't want to like, you know, not look at an offer if somebody wanted to put something forward with a 20-year with an option to buy, but I think you, you know, maybe need to hear that the strong preferences for long-term leases, if that's in fact what it is, and maybe others can, can weigh in a little bit on that, so that you guys have a little bit of that, taking our temperature before you get out too far in marketing it. Yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say, I know that's still a decision you have to make, lease or sell or whatever, but if you do think about maybe that as an option, if they do a 20-year lease with an option to buy at the end, their price, their purchase price is going to be significantly higher than it would be today. Once all those five pieces are filled in, activity's going there, there, it, it will definitely yield you a much higher value. I know that it, in the existing leases, they say the land less improvements, but still just the land itself would be significantly increased in value after those 20 years.
Sure. We understand. You know, we did one, one deal like that with Shea, and, you know, it adjusted the market rate in 20 years, and so.
Yeah. But we do think, you know, a lease scenario like that will still be well-received.
You know, we were a little worried about it. We did find the apartment user who was, you know, willing to do a long-term lease, which was kind of surprising to me, but, you know, they, we found that they are out there, and, you know, if, if this helps, you know, again, I guess I, my preference would be to do a slightly under-market-rate long-term lease than a slightly over-market-rate sale, if that makes any sense to you. But again, in my mind, I'd like to hear all offers, so that council, because council ultimately is going to be making these decisions, you're going to bring before on these contracts, contracts, they're going to, we're going to look at each of these leases or lease sales. Any other comments or questions? I know that we've got this on the agenda for this evening, correct? And so, you know, I don't know if we can get any feedback from you, and it's kind of a quick turnaround, you know, I don't know if council wants to, you know, continue to discuss this, and, you know, I don't know if you're able to give us feedback on some of these questions or concerns tonight regarding the, the, the fee on the LOIs, or if you'd prefer to, you know, come back at this a couple of weeks from now. We meet every two weeks.
Some feedback before your, is your council meeting at 7:00?
Yes, sir. We apologize. We brought you in at the 11th hour, and we appreciate you coming down, so, you know, I think if you work with us, we could do a deal tonight. If you wanted to discuss it and come back to the table, we could, we could repick this issue up in two weeks.
Okay. We can, we can step out here and talk for a little bit.
Another issue to come back to, so if you want to come back, you know, five or 10 minutes before 7:00, then we'll get you back around.
Sure. Just one other thing here, real quick, I, I just wanted to let you know that I, hopefully I didn't print these off for, for not. So, I brought several brochures for properties that we're working in and throughout, you know, not only South Metro Denver, but throughout the, the metro, like, so, I encourage you to take a look at some of these. I think you'll see the quality of our marketing materials is really strong, and we take pride in the quality of our marketing materials, and we, I said that from, from day one in our first meeting here, and, you know, I think we're going to do the same, and we're going to have a, a strong product for, for you folks as well, and truly take it out to market to make sure you guys get the best product.
Thank you, sir. Looks like we've got some other questions or comments, so we're going to continue the conversation. Councilmember Raulson?
My question, thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions about it. My question is about what Councilmember Berantine brought up. Are we getting any?
My question is about our process. So, a, a couple of questions were raised about whether or not we were ready to make this decision. I feel like we are, but if we don't, if, if- I feel like we are, but if we don't, if, if, I don't want to waste their time if we're not there yet as a group, to have them go figure something out and then come back to say, well, we're not even talking about it yet, we have too many other issues. So, if we can sort that through, I'd feel better for them in the long run.
You know, I guess I would comment and just say that, you know, it is listed on our agenda next door, and you know, the majority of council is going to either vote it down, vote it up, or table it. You know, I think those are the three options. If, if folks want to give some guidance on where they're at on this issue, if you guys could give some guidance, I think that would help us, you know, knowing that, no, we won't modify the terms, if we got to make a decision, then I feel like we, you know, we could deal with it at that point. Unless other folks comment, I just don't have a gauge on the consensus yet, but I'd like to move on to Councilmember Berantine and maybe pick back up and make sure we understand where we're going. Councilmember Berantine?
I appreciate that, Councilmember Olson, because I don't feel like I got hurt at all. I am confused that you guys are here tonight. The questions that were asked, were asked about us seeing the LOIs, the other RFPs, making a decision whether we were wanting to do a long-term lease and, or lease to sell, and making, having a discussion about what we believe the intent of that vote was from the voters, because I think that they thought that that was just one property. I know it's being interpreted different, but that's them. That has little to do with what you guys were doing. The questions that I raised had to do more with the conversations of how you got picked. And I don't mean to be repetitive, but I don't believe I've been hurt here. I mean, the, I'm confused why you're here to, because it puts you in a position where you're trying to defend your contract rather than for us to explore the questions that we had on how this whole process came about and how you got picked and the decisions that kind of went into that. And that's really us needs to do that. The other is that we have procedures, Councilmembers Olson's right, on our own policy procedures, when issues are brought to study session, they're not to be on the, on the city council at the same night. And we're either following the procedures and rules that are being brought forward, or we pick and choose when it's expedient for us. So, that's wordward, wordwards rule, and I agree with that, that things that are brought to study session, that it's supposed to give people an opportunity to have some time to think about the information that's been brought. I don't think it's either professional or fair to you to ask you to go out in the hallway and kind of come up with something so that we feel comfortable to vote on this tonight. I'm sorry if I was repetitive, but so much of this doesn't really have anything to do with you. I think a lot of the stuff that you've said has been actually very, you know, actually puts me at ease a lot more than that you would explore some other things, but we need to get to the point where we're there and having a little bit more understanding with EMIRF on where council sits, and I think that takes a little bit more. I'm not interested in trying to push this forward.
Thank you. If I could go to Mr. Comer, and then I'll...
I don't know if this will help, but to echo what Councilmember Berantine said, it's in your policy and procedure rules, and it's, it's not a formal rule, but a practice developed over the years. It's called the Garrett Rule. A matter is not to...
Woodward Credit, sorry.
He's got his own rule.
He does have one, it's similar. That's from boards and commissions.
A matter is not to be considered a study session at the, and at the formal council meeting on the same evening. This is to allow council time to consider all the information presented at the study session and to contemplate that information. So, that's for that, for your end of...
Mr. Brennan?
You know, to clarify, at the 21st council meeting, I asked if you wanted all eight proposals, and it was my understanding that you did not. You wanted to know a summary of the terms, and that is all I provided, so if I was mistaken, that's, it's my mistake.
Well, I think it was LOI, you know, I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about the LOIs and the underlying, underlying LOIs, and we're talking about the responses to the RFP from other brokerage communities. From the brokerage community, we were just looking for a summary, and you did a great job with that in my mind, but we didn't see the LOIs, which I think is what maybe you're referencing there. Councilmember Berantine? Maybe a head nod?
You don't want me to go through the whole thing again? But I did write, I did write it down that we wanted to have the RFPs, that we wanted, that we had to make a decision about whether we were really going to lease and sell, and have some clarity on that, and whether we were, how we were going to proceed with marketing and not marketing, because there seemed to be a push, not at the meeting, but the EMIRF meeting, on how you decided to, for them. So, I wanted a little bit more clarity about what we were doing, and maybe we didn't...
Yep, I'll come back to that, just to throw it here.
So, the, so the RFPs are the proposals, so that's, I guess, that's why...
I guess we're talking about two different things. She is, in fact, talking about the responses to the RFP that you were just mentioning, but again, I guess I was referencing the LOIs. I would have liked to have seen the LOIs myself.
Right, in the meeting, when I referenced it back and said, you, it looked like that played a bigger role in picking people, was keeping the people who had the LOIs and, and doing away with the marketing. But I have the, I have the notes from that meeting, and those were the concerns that ended up being on how we picked, who we picked, and why. And it seemed to be more of a focus on keeping the people that, it kind of sounded you felt that you had already made commitments to. So, we needed to, as a council, have more agreement on where we were going, and I don't think we've reached that yet. I don't think that's your...
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
Considering our own policy manual, I would make a suggestion that this evening we don't vote on this contract. Give us the time that we need to consider what they have to say, give them an opportunity to actually think about what they would like to do. Because I, I have to agree, sending them out into the hall and, you know, figure it out and come back and tell us is, is not really all that fair to anyone, us, them, or the community, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I, I'll agree with that, and I would like us to outline what we want. I did not hear two weeks ago that we wanted LOIs. I'm not sure they'd be helpful to me because of my own expertise, but if everybody thinks we all need those, that's great. What I'm concerned about more about the LOIs is how much time has our staff, have our staff actually spent with those? If it's just they received them and they haven't had to do much, then to me, it's a different ballgame, and your involvement would be, like, we'd need almost everything from you with those, and we're going to have to pay for it. So I'd like to know a little bit of that now that I hear a little, a little more here, if we're going to wait for another time. I do think we need to resolve this. What are we doing? Are we offering a twenty-year with a sale afterwards or not? How are we interpreting that? How did the citizens interpret that? How was it read? I, I obviously interpreted it one way, and we have differences. So, I like their proposal in general, so...
Thank you. You know, again, I'll suggest to this council that, again, exactly what I suggested, regardless of our internal rule, it is scheduled, it is notice posted, we will either need to vote it up, vote it down, or table it to a date certain, and we'll take care of that at seven o'clock, and...
But is it worth it for them to come back with a thing between now and...
No, if they don't, I, I totally agree with council here in that regard, that, you know, I don't want to put you guys under any undue pressure, and, you know, let's, let's take a moment and, and make sure that we communicate and understand each other and, and get this right. You know, if you're comfortable with that, then great, but if you're not, I, I feel totally, I totally agree with the council that, you know, let's take a moment here. Mayor Protime, Jill...
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
I do have another question for you. Would you market the property differently if we do twenty-year renewable term leases rather than twenty-year option to buy? So, I guess what I'm asking is it, would it be helpful to you that we make that decision before you decide that you're going to market it, just because we can't make up our mind and we want to decide what the best?
I can answer that. I think that we're going to market the property regardless of, you know, the, the end-all, you know, desire for either a lease or a lease with an option to purchase. I think we're going to go maximize and make sure that it gets into the, the vast majority of the public, whether that's, again, the retailers, the end-users, the, I say end-users because maybe it's not a retail use, right? Brokerage community, developers, so on and so forth. We're going to market the property, and that's what we do, is market properties. And I think that, from our perspective, we want to make sure you get the most exposure as possible, regardless of whatever the setup is, and I'm sure might...
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
And I just want to add, I think it might come down to later down the road, you know, someone might say, I just can't get the lending because I need an option to buy. And so then, maybe that, maybe it's a later decision, you know? Like, we really like this use here, and maybe we're saying, hey, this use drives this other use, and they all synergistic together, we really think we need to land these guys, and maybe it's a la, a later decision, too. Maybe it's only marketed for lease and we let other people ask that question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? Seeing that, I'll thank NavPoint again for coming in and beginning a conversation with us. I appreciated your perspective on a, a long-term relationship, and I hope this can be beginning of one. I know we got off a little bit on the wrong foot in that regard, so I apologize for that, but appreciate you coming down and having a conversation with us.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mayor Protime, did you have something? I apologize, I didn't come back to you.
Okay, excuse me. Just to clarify, I'll get you the proposals and the letters of intent.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's what you get for being a gentleman.
I know. But it's the right thing to do.
Well, thank you again. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Two. This is strategic plan update. City Manager Eric Keck is present to discuss the strategic plan update. Good evening, Mr. Keck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Thanks for the time afforded this evening to discuss the strategic plan. This has been in the works, actually, for a couple of years now. Specifically, as, as you recall, staff did start out with putting together an operational plan that then morphed into more of a, a strategy for internal operations and how the city would be managed moving forward. So, I'm pleased to present this tonight. You may wonder... What? Oh, you get it off, thank you. Like, it's not working. You may wonder, again, why you're, you're hearing from this, on this particular item now, and I'll say this, that this particular strategy incorporates much of what's been discussed at council goal-setting, and specifically, you know, the five points that emanated from the goal-setting session, and those points, again, are economic development, customer service, place-making, pride in, and pride in the community today, and hope for the future for tomorrow. Those have all been baked into this particular process. So, what I'd like to do tonight is just quickly run through these slides, and if you have questions, obviously, very happy to answer any you might have. Yes, sir?
Is this a test? There's, like, Chinese writing, is this just for Joe? Or...
Not maybe he wrote it?
It's on Hurst, too, so I just...
I didn't get any Chinese memos.
That's a good, good question.
Mine's in English, I, you know, I don't know, what the heck?
So, on the second page with the genesis, I have a, a yellow sticky, kind of the top left, and it's in English.
Yeah, and that's, those are my comments for you to, to read as well.
Apparently you guys got converted.
I'm not sure about the Chinese writing.
It didn't pop up on Saturday morning when I read this, so it's weird. Yeah, I'm not seeing that.
Okay, sorry, continue.
No, thank, thank you.
You're testing us.
So, what's the genesis for this strategy in the first place? This goes back to 2014. When I was initially recruited by the city, I believed that the mandate at that point in time was hired to bring change, and specifically, address what was enunciated by the council at that time was a lack of a strategy. The, one of the things that was enunciated to was to create a business-focused strategy and plan. One of the other items that was asked for was to cultivate a high-performance culture that strives for excellence and accountability. And so, excellence and accountability are themes that you'll see running throughout this plan as well. And then finally, to achieve a vibrant and sustainable Inglewood. So, there was a discovery period and findings. Obviously, when I first came here, was handed a couple of hot potatoes. One of those was to ascertain and determine what to do with the fire department, and so that took a lot of time. However, I did spend significant effort going out into the community, talking to existing business, talking to every department in the city, talking to some residents and citizenry to understand what did people like about the community, what did they dislike about the community, and specifically, drilling down even further, or from an organizational standpoint, what organizationally was going well and what was not going so well. So what I found was not endemic or systemic of just our organization, but it was more along the lines of people saying, you know what, we want change, we're not sure what that change looks like, we've been in a period of stasis with respect to leadership and management for a while, so please, paint us a vision of where you want to go, and we'll, you know, we'll try to get behind that. Well, one of the things that we all know about change are basically four things. Number one, change registers as pain in the brain, predicated on people's expectation and, and what they see in reality. So, anytime there's change, you're going to have anxiety. Number two, change is a process. Change certainly is a process that you need to be dealing with. People's expectations are going to shape reality is the third thing that we know. People's expectation is, hey, I'm doing just fine, I'm comfortable with where I am, doing what we're doing, don't rock the boat, don't change what we're doing. And then, lastly, one of the things that we understand about change, again, is when you're proposing to do changes or looking at some initiative like a strategy or an operational plan, again, you get that dissonance or anxieties created between people's expectations and what you're asking them to do with reality. So, as a result of that, what we had here, first and foremost, the pieces that were missing, was we did not have a mission for the city. We didn't have a vision, we didn't have a, any set of values that were already created for the city, and so, we spent time in, in late 2014 to create that. We then moved on to another piece that's very critical for change, or for any creation of a team. You know, you look back to the different pieces of it, you have storming, norming, forming, and then performing. Well, in order to get there, we spent some significant time with the development team, director team, and developing them, and having them go through some self-awareness. In order to do that, we all undertook what's called the Berkman Assessment. There's any, a number of different assessments that you can take, but we looked at that one because it looks at people's usual behavior, customary behavior, and stress response, and how do we work and view each, each other, and how do we avoid conflict? So we did that. At that point in time, in late 2015, the council approved an agreement with Transformation Point for help with creating an operational plan. Moving along in the timeframe, again, that operational plan, Transformation Point did not write the plan. It was all done, and it was just a facilitation that the individual from TP did for us. He helped the directors and staff create the ops plan. The operational plan then was compartmentalizing the teams to work on the specific themes. There were seventeen disparate themes that came about from that, and they all centered around really four different things that really hasn't changed today with our strategy. People, infrastructure, finance, communication, and, you know, those were, those were constant themes that were gone through. But the other thing that we wanted to do, too, was to make sure that we integrated the operational plan with priority-based budgeting, and those priorities, those results, or community goals, as we're calling them today, and that was completed in May of 2016. From there, we held employee focus groups, we had an outside facility do that. It's one thing for people to speak candidly with each other, but when you involve management or myself as city manager, you're not going to get people to do that. And so, Transformation Point came in and had some really deep conversations with folks, gained and gleaned a lot of, of themes and things that we needed to work upon. We held a feedback and strategy session where we shared the feedback with all of our employees, and frankly, this is something as, as me as a leader of the organization, and I'll talk about this much later in this presentation, was a lot of lessons learned about the organization, the capacity, how much you can push with change before people are going to get to the point where there's really a lot of static and anxiety. So, lastly, on here, directors and, directors used the organizational plan and the focus group results late last year and created the strategy that we have today. And so, that was completed in December of 2016. That was shared again with employees, we gained their feedback. One of the critical system factors with change is, again, working through your stakeholders to ensure that they're on board, they provided some feedback. So, in a sense, by sharing the plan and having them work through it, we actually gained feedback and buy-in. And I hate to use the word buy-in because people are already bought in because they wouldn't be working here otherwise, but what we ended up gleaning from that was a belief that, yeah, this can be done, and we, we want to be part of this. So, that feedback then was used and refined down because it was just a tremendous amount of things that we needed to accomplish into what we're calling the Inglewood Five, and we'll talk about what those five priorities are for 2017 here in a second. we'll talk about what those five priorities are for 2017 here in a second. Now, we have work groups that are actually scheduled and working on the Inglewood Five today. So, what is the Inglewood Five? It's a strategy-focused area in five key areas. People, communications, governance, fiscal fundamentals, and infrastructure. And specifically for us, the Inglewood Five is, is this, and all those elements were broken down into these particular tasks for 2017, was to fully implement the compensation plan. US City Council approved the compensation plan last year. However, it didn't look at total rewards. Compensation is more than just one's wages. They're just base salary. Obviously, it entails a number of things, and so we've been working diligently to create a compensation plan that is, does two things, it recruits well and it retains well. Second strategy or initiative that we're going to work on here in 2017 are performance management improvements. Heretofore, we've been utilizing a system for our employees called NeoGov Perform, and that system, it's great because it's electronic, but it's only as good as the instrument that you use to rate your employees. And so, we're going to be working through and creating a performance management system plan that works for disparate departments that have disparate needs. Thirdly, we're going to work on workplace safety, and this doesn't come as a surprise to you, but we heard from our employees that they were concerned with not only the safety of this building, but also the safety of some of the work sites that they have to work at, whether it's the streets or wastewater treatment plant, water, public works. We're working diligently to drill down and create workplace safety teams that address that to help us also with a number of things, including DART rate, those things that we look at from a workers' compensation focus. And we're going to work to reduce our workplace incidents and accidents by a focus and intentional work in that realm. Next, we have communication improvements. We're going to be working internally and externally to ensure that we're improving communication there. You're very aware of the fact that we're working externally with Slate to be able to communicate with our citizenry and business community in new and different ways. We followed through with acquiring, you know, Slate as a company to help us to do that. Lastly, this is very important, too, and this is the piece that council is going to play a large role in in 2017 and beyond, but that's fiscal strategy. How can we, again, ensure that we're utilizing the resources that we have and been given by our residents and business partners in the best and most economical way? So, what to expect in 2017? Obviously, the full integration of priority-based budgeting, the results or community goals into the strategic plan, as well as the 2018 budget process. I think significant progress towards the Inglewood Five, as we just discussed. Improve culture. An improved culture from the standpoint of ensuring that we are becoming more innovative. We're working more diligently towards customer service, looking for new and different ways in which to contain cost, generate revenues that are, are, you know, reasonable. And then also, council will receive updates on how we're doing with this particular plan over the year, as well as what the plan for 2018 will look like. So, strategy is not a journey. It's, it's a journey. It's not a destination, I mean. The, the creation of the strategy has required significant effort. Significant effort from the planning stage, significant effort from execution. There's four stages that we have to look at. The initiation, which happened when I first got here, the planning, which we've done, the execution, which we're starting to do now, and then the last piece is stick. So, if you look at it as the four stages, initiate, plan, execute, and stick, we're going to create a culture by, by talking about values and creating systems in place, processes in places that will point everybody in the same direction and make sure that we have success. So, we've learned much about the culture of our organization, the capacity to do work, the tenacity of the organization as well to say, and push back and say, hey, wait a minute, you're moving too fast, or you forgot something, and, you know, that's been helpful. I think our organization has learned what it also is going to take to be successful. Undertaking the operational plan, when we looked at trying to bite the, eat the elephant all at one point in time, was something that was probably too much, not probably too much, it was too much for our organization to be able to tackle. And I'll accept that, and that's what I've told our employees as well. I think with leadership, you, you need to be able to accept and acknowledge when you've made a mistake and say, hey, you know what? We are trying to push too much. When I got here, I saw a bunch of nails sticking up, and if it looked like a nail, I was going to hammer it. And so, you know, now I'm learning to understand, I need to be patient and understanding with the organization, and ensuring that we look at the six system factors when you're trying to impose change as well. And that's making sure you have a clear vision for where you're trying to go, you have accountability from top to bottom, you have skills development for employees to help them get through the change, that you involve the stakeholders in the planning process, that you have metrics that measure where we're going and how we're going to get there. And finally, we want to encourage and reinforce behaviors that we want to see. And so, all of those six factors, we're making sure that we don't mess those up, because if we do, like, if you're looking at it like cogs in a, in a, in a gear shift, if those cogs aren't turning, it's going to stop you from making progress. And so, we very, very concerned about that. So, in a nutshell, and quickly, that was our strategy and strategic plan. You should have had in your packet, too, this particular document that I think outlines a lot of what we're trying to do and where we're trying to go, and it helps give you an idea of where we're going. This document, too, is available on the city's website, not only for tonight's packet, but underneath departments, inside city hall, city manager's office, this document's in there as well, and it explains exactly what city staffs are working upon with the strategy. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Russell?
Will we be going over this document in more detail at some point?